Welcome to the Board of Education regular meeting. First order of business that we usually lead off our meetings with is the pledge of allegiance. So if you'll join me. Starting with recognition.
Alright, so we got a full house.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna kick this in Shannon Gagne. It's nice to see you again Shannon, and you are gonna introduce our CAS Award winner to start. I think is the first thing we're doing?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, well, thank you so much for having us this evening and celebrating the arts. We have so much to be proud for. I'm Shannon Gagne, I'm the Art Department Supervisor of K-12 of Visual Arts. And I'll be celebrating the visual and performing arts. So if I could have Naya Vasquez, please stand up. Sitting in the back, okay. So I am so excited to honor Naya Vasquez as the Connecticut Association of School CAS Award recipient for Excellence in the Visual Arts. Showcased through her exemplary work in Advanced Placement 3D Design, Naya's dedication extends beyond the classroom, supporting peers and teachers as a teaching assistant in visual art classes. Her commitment is evident in her efforts both in and out of school, attending workshops like the summer pre-collegiate portfolio workshop and summer ceramics program to foster her artistic growth. Naya's accolades including awards in our high school art show, Scholastic Art Awards, and CRT's National Art Exhibit highlight her exceptional abilities. As she prepares to pursue art at the Hartford Art School with her $31,000 a year scholarship from their partner. We are very excited for Naya's promising future. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And so Blue Brockert could not be here this evening, but we are excited to celebrate him as the recipient of the CAS Performing Arts Award. For four years, Blue has enriched our jazz ensemble with exceptional musicality and dedication. As a valued member of the Gospel Choir Band for three years, Blue's contributions added depth and soul to our performances. Blue's leadership as a tryout officer exemplifies a true passion for music and a commitment to excellence. Collaborating closely with chorus director Rebecca Saltzman, Blue has played an integral role in enhancing our musical programs and concerts. We're delighted to hear of Blue's future plans to attend the Peabody Institute at John Hopkins University, where he will major in music for new media specializing in scoring music for film and television. So congratulations to Blue. And I think next.
Yeah, I'll tee this up a little. As you can see, this space is not the greatest space of art gatherings, right? But one of the things that is special about this space is we utilize our student artwork to really kind of decorate it and bring it to life. So it's a tradition we have in our district, and this is the year where we change out the student artwork. So we are gonna honor those students whose artwork got picked and framed here.
Yes. And I just wanted to share that Imagine It Framed, custom-framed each design, each work of art with a beautiful, really enhancing each piece individually. And in two years, it's the gift of the Board of Ed to families, so I'll be finding all of you. We're in Texas, we have a participant in Texas, so we'll be returning to you for your homes. So, thank you. So how did you, or do you guys want?
Sharon, you are the lead.
Yes. So I have the pleasure of having Anna Su- Sousa.
Is Anna here?
Is Anna here?
I don't see her yet, but I did see her in school today.
Okay.
And so.
Maybe she'll come and we'll.
Okay, great.
Oh, she's here, hold on.
Grand entrance.
She can come with you.
Hi babe.
So Anna, Anna?
Yeah.
Okay. So Anna, I wanna congratulate you by presenting you with this certificate for your art achievement, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Alright?
And Anna's pieces right over.
You wanna show me which one to show us?
Yes.
So this is part of what we do too, so we're gonna be scooping through. Wanna point, wanna go with?
No.
Oh wow. So she's standing, is QR code there?
Yeah.
The scan. Good job. And then the next person that I have is Lucia. Is Lucia here? Oh, there you are.
Hi.
So, again, here's your certificate, and you wanna say what grade you're in?
Uh, I'm sixth grade.
And Anna was in the 12th grade, I forgot to say. So hopefully you'll keep this up right. For me, okay. But here's your certificate. And then you wanna show us where you're at? Oh, okay. Oh, that's nice. It's like a flower in print on one play, it's on a play base.
Okay, I'm up next. So I'll wait till you come sit here. Alrighty, I have the honor of presenting to, and it's gonna be in the back, on the back wall, of course. So is Lua Vazquez here? She's ninth grade?
It's beautifier.
Do you know she's here?
Lua.
Lua, is she here? Is she out in the hall? No, okay. Well, Lua. Lua Vazquez, her piece of work is right there.
If I'm correct.
Yes. That is right there. Actually, I'm gonna scoot by so I can see that.
It's a metal jewelry piece.
It's a piece of jewelry, oh. A piece of work after my own heart. But that's absolutely gorgeous. If she ever wants to sell it, I will be the first to do it. Anyway, so that is wonderful. And Lua is ninth grade, as I said, in Suisbury High School, and this was about vision of the graduate, and hers was about compet- about vision of the grad- graduate competency, innovator. And actually, that is very innovative. So wonderful. So we will give her her achievement award at another time. The second recipient is Adriana Ganchegue, did I pronounce it? Seventh grade?
Right behind you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Ganchegue.
Ganchegue, okay. I knew I would get it right about ten times later. Alright, now, your award, I believe, is back here, and would you like to tell us?
Ooh, Mrs. Wild, your favorite.
I'm in areas, so I just decided.
Oh, good for her. Almost there.
It took a long time, the horns kept falling off.
Perseverance.
And the eyes took forever because it's hard to get in there.
Oh, that's absolutely beautiful. So after two years, do you have a special place in your home to put this?
I'm actually going to a private school, so I'll probably throw.
Okay, well, can I share a little secret with you? I also have a mass collection, so if you get tired of it in your, you know, continuing on school, I'd like to buy it for you. So I have a very special place where you can put very nicely, if you have anything that you ask me like that. That is beautiful. So congratulations. Well, I am going to give you your art achievement award. Congratulations again. In your future, in your future education.
And for you that noticed, that was Lydia, two-for-two trying to purchase the artwork.
Like, stand up any longer, I'll be buying it all.
Who's next?
Hey, everyone, thanks for coming out tonight. Alright, so I've got a few here. So the first one is for Christian Stewart, is Linda Lynn.
Yes.
Uh, hey Linda, thanks for coming up from Texas.
Texas.
So this is for Christian's piece, so you can give this. I believe the piece is over here, correct?
She's holding Christian.
Yeah.
So you got this piece right here? Congratulations. Everyone's very proud of you, you should be very happy with your work, it's up on the wall if you haven't seen it. What do you wanna say, Christian?
That, that I mean, I, if somebody, if nobody, or it's to me, and I just, and I just really like to be, be there.
Alright, and then next piece, Peyton, I'm sitting right here. Little Peyton, stand up. Stand up. Congratulations.
Father prize?
You won prize.
You got Caitlin Watson, congratulations with the unified art partner award. Congratulations to both of you, you should be very happy with the work we pulled on.
It's a collaborative piece.
So I think I'm next. I have the honor of presenting two awards. The first to Jack Pinkum, who's in second grade. Oh, there we are, Jack, hi. I have a second grader, I know this must be a lot. And so this is Jack's work right here. Can you tell us a little bit about it? Is it a street scene, a city scene? It's beautiful. Thank you so much, here's your award, and thank you so much for sharing it with us. Alright, sitting right in front of you. And then the next one is for Valentina Bompastore, did I get that right? Valentina, are you here? Okay, well, her piece is right here, and she's in fifth grade, and she is watching the clock. So much to Valentina.
Thank you.
And one all the way over here. Cullinage, Cedar Cullinage Griffin. Just wanna get it right. This is your piece right over here?
Yeah.
It's fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I know I saw you in the play.
Yeah.
And I know I've seen you in the Gospel Choir. So I'm loving that I get to see you here. Do you wanna tell us a little bit about why you did this?
Sure, so this is, um, photographs that I merged together using Photoshop, um, process. But it's sort of about, um, expressing the lived experience of depression and just mental health as a whole, um, from day to day, and how that can fluctuate throughout your life. And there's a QR code you can scan, there's a whole video where I explain how I did it, and it's a very cool.
Wonderful, and anyone who visits Town Hall can come up and do that, because these, all these kids have already put a lot of effort into the QR codes and the story behind these things. But thank you very much, and congratulations. Samantha Fitzgerald. Is she here?
Oh, Samantha.
Come on over, show us. Congratulations, and achievement art award.
So, everyone was doing like ship sinking, and like monsters and stuff. I did not wanna do that. And I just wanted to do something more happy, so, um.
Perfect. Great colors, very bright and cherry, and do you serve?
You sold it, you sold it.
And I have the honor to add Molly Kellerer. Molly, come over. Your picture's over here with me. How are you? Congratulations, and this one is your beautiful one. You wanna tell us a little bit about it?
Uh, yeah, so, um, um, I made an honor because, um, my art teacher said I have to, and. And, um, and they're also adorable, and.
They're my favorite.
And I, and at Christmas, I, um, donate, um, I donated money for honors because someone's in danger.
Well, what a good story. Well, congratulations, here's your certificate. And then the last I have is Evan Porter. Evan, nice to meet you, Evan, I like your shirt. Really cool one. And your art, all the way over here. So you wanna tell me a little bit about it, or what do you think?
I like rainbows.
What is this, what is this one right here?
I have a little chicken.
I did too. Well, thank you, and I expect, right? Who is this person here? Do you know that person, or is it just? That's you? That's, well, now you're gonna be up here for forever, for two years you're gonna be up here. Thank you so much for sharing your art, can I give you that certificate? Alright, thank you.
Alright, I'm well-prepared. I have the honor of the last one. Right behind me, by Hannah Vato. Did I say that right? Is Hannah here?
Hannah's right here.
Where's the, oh, I know.
Thank you, you should have given you burned it.
Thank you very much. Can you tell us a little bit about this? My son's loving games, he's like. Speaks to me, so. Thank you very much, congratulations.
We got them all.
Yes, that's it.
Well, congratulations, everybody, and thank you to the board for the, the gift of the framing and for honoring each student, that was great.
In case you all don't know, this is one of our favorite times.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go to the Scholastic?
Yeah, I would go to this, and then, yep.
So I'm also here to celebrate the Scholastic Art Awards, which is a huge state and national competition for our visual arts students, grade seven through 12. And we have quite a few recognitions this year. Some are hanging in this room, so, so we have a variety, and I would like you to just notice in the, um, the variety of media and formats. So we have sculpture and ceramics, this was a Best in Show in the state of Connecticut.
Awesome.
We also have clay, it's smoke-fired, pit-fired clay at Vicente Garcia, so the students are getting great experiences that help with the competitions throughout the state. Printmaking, in eighth grade, this was a gold key. We have 2D, two-dimensional, like flats, 3D, and technology strands in all of our grade levels, so here is a film and animation in eighth grade that was recognized. Digital art, Keira Gable. This is also Keira Gables in a drawing and illustration, and this piece was actually just hung at the Madituck Museum for the Congressional Art Exhibi- Exhibition. This was a fashion photography, we have a great fashion course, and, and this piece was recognized as Best in Show at the local photography contest as well, so. We have two pieces that were created by Cedar, tenth grade, and I just, we have a Simsbury alum that is his sister Willa, that also were recognized. She's in art school now, but, so photography here, and here's his digital art piece that was recognized with a gold key.
It's amazing.
This is Miriam Salta, so her portfolio, her photography portfolio was exacted and presented at the University of Hartford, and we can recognize Naya Vasquez sitting back here. Here's an example of her 3D work of art, just one piece that is incredible. You can see her work at the art show and all their artwork at the art show next week as well. Alice and Aviva, here's a fused glass piece, so the students are also working in a variety of media, from clay to glass. Another glass sculpture in the round that's lit beautifully, and this was also recognized. And this was Best in Show, also Best in Film and Animation in the state of Connecticut from one of our students at Simsbury, hi. May Berteri. Does have, it has some juice to it. Can you hear the sound? But, if anybody's is familiar with stop motion animations, every time this little figure moves.
It's muted.
Yeah, she got it.
Here we go.
That's amazing.
Great job.
It is a great job, Peyton, you're right.
Good point.
So, um, so yeah, thank you so much, the students put so much time and effort, and the teachers, and we're so proud of our program, and we're so proud of all of your efforts. And please come to the Henry James Art Show on tomorrow night and Thursday, and then next week is the Simsbury High School Art Show, and the students will have their capsule presentations and their senior examples of their portfolios, where you can hear insight into their process and see their final product, and they're exceptional, so thank you so much.
Fantastic.
Just, again, wanna thank everybody for coming out, and you do not have to say. I'll give you the exit slip.
Thank you.
Shannon Gagne.
Yes.
I have to put it down on seventeen. You are, you're used to the tech. I have to just advance it from the bottom to the.
Great job, thank you very much.
We've got chili, it's always good. Oh, absolutely. Let us get our heads up.
Wanna get her in front of it?
Did you get a picture of Hannah in front of first? You may? Okay. Come back, please, at any point, and take pictures.
Thank you. Yeah, could you grab one for me?
Do you need a packet?
Oh.
Are there extras?
Yeah, there's more, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I only got one extra. Do you wanna pack it too, the red by the door?
Oh my gosh. You got me one, Josh. Enough for everybody, I'm sorry.
I'd be so proud.
Oh my god, that's just amazing. Are you kidding me? Yeah, please.
Fifth grade?
So, that's a lot of talent right there.
She's an up-and-comer. One hundred percent.
Enjoy every minute.
Oh my goodness, so talented, and so humble.
The hair.
That's my favorite. That's my favorite. Beautiful.
Hey, can we, can we keep, can we keep rolling here, folks?
Okay, thank you.
Is Maggie out in the hallway?
She is.
Yep.
Bring her back.
Thank you, Josh.
Well, that's nice. It's a good bonus for you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Seidel. Excuse me, is, is there a, you want? Welcome. We have two more introductions tonight.
Yes, we do.
Alrighty. Important rules to know, you jump right in, yeah.
Okay, good evening, everyone, I'm excited to introduce the board to our two new representatives, student reps for the 24-25 school year. So. So they will take over in the big shoes that are left by Sophia and Matt. Um, so excited to welcome you to um, and introduce Macy Getz and Rafaela Rosadio, who will be here next year as our co um, leaders as the student representative. So.
Fantastic.
Yay.
Congratulations.
And I think they really have so many assets that bring the voice of our students to um, the board and hopefully back to the student population. So Macy attended Terriffill Elementary School and Rafaela was at Squadron Line. So they started here in Simsbury and both of them are um, belong to different organizations. They've started different things like the Simsbury Volantines. We also have the um, the Wish um, group, which raises money for the Make-A-Wish. And then you've got different activities like athletics and student organizations that they both belong to, that I think will be a great highlight and asset to um, that that relationship between the board and our students.
That's great.
We love having their voice.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Be very impressed with all the things that they're involved in and um, the different things that they do after school, before school, and in all hours of the day. They both just came, one came off the golf course and one came off the tennis court.
Yeah, they do.
So, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And thank you to Sophia and to Matt for representing Simsbury High School and all of our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Congratulations to all of our art.
See you in the fall.
I had the pleasure of meeting both of them and saying they're they're involved is a complete understatement. There is a long list of organizations they are engaged with, so looking forward to working with them both. So moving on to public audience. Um, moves to committee reports. Start, Sophia.
Yeah, I was gonna start by saying that the Simsbury High School Art Show. Starts from May twenty-second to twenty-fourth. And then Henry James Art Show is this week. I know it said, but really I like kinda peeked in and it's really amazing stuff. Um, and also Simsbury High School is in the final week of AP testing, which started on the seventh. It'll wrap up this Friday. Um, and then on the concert side of things, we have the Pops and Jazz Concert, May sixteenth. The Choral Review, May twenty-second. And then we also, next week it's gonna be a busy week, have capstone presentations on the twenty-third um, for juniors and seniors. And then we also have junior prom this Saturday.
Oh.
And then Henry James Student Council had a really successful Spring Fling Festival, looked really fun. There was a lot of inflatables. And then both Terriffill and Squadron have upcoming carnivals and auctions to fundraise for the PTO on May twenty-first and May sixteenth respectively. And then all the elementary schools are wrapping up their S-PAC and NGSX testing, testing this week.
Thank you.
Nothing for me, except to add, I think there's a band concert Thursday, too.
Yeah, that's Pops and.
Oh, that's the Pops one. Got it. Okay. It's on my calendar and I just like forgot about it recently, so yeah, nothing to add. A busy time of year. It's a very busy time of year. So it's a real busy time of year because you'll be happy and I guess we're all happy that the legislature ended on time at the final hour last week. And tomorrow is the legislative wrap up. Um, I will be attending. Usually Neil, will you be attending also?
I am. Are you picking me up?
I'm picking you up. I'll drive right by and pick you up. You know, I'll even bring you coffee. So um, so this will be tomorrow. We will have a press conference. And obviously you heard which um, bills were passed, education funding, teacher cert, ed mandates, gender equality, disconnected youth, and the task forces. And then we'll have the legal update. On the crack fund, we have, we have a positive note that the changes to the education funding in the implementer reinstated the rest magnet school funding. And this was really important and it's all important for all the the rest magnet schools. And and we obviously are part of, part of one. So it allows a reduction of local tuition costs. So it's not only us, but it's all the rest, all the magnet schools students in tuition. So these funds, which were forty million dollars, it doesn't seem like a lot, but it it is a lot, were included in the final budget last year, but they were removed from the governor's proposed budget for twenty twenty-five. So um, we're hoping that the language in the bonding bill will be available. So more to come on that. We worked really hard. We advocated and really stressed because that was the one area that all the rest really pleaded to keep that, to keep that in. So more to come on that throughout the summer in into the fall. So so that's.
That would have impacted everybody? That would have impacted crack in terms of.
Yes, this was, this was.
Or magnet and local districts who would have had to pay significantly more towards.
Yes, so.
Magnet school tuition.
Yes, so that's why it was real important and and we testified um, you know, on behalf of crack and on behalf of the rest regarding the magnet school tuition funding. And and because we don't wanna see those costs, you know, being absorbed by by local districts, which if this funding doesn't get reinstated, there's a probable chance that it will be. So so we don't know where this is gonna end up on the governor's desk. But we're we're still hoping and and that we'll find out more more tomorrow on that. But ask me anything. Ask me anything you want. I got everything right here for all the bills that were passed and and those that weren't passed. So um, so we'll see what.
We'll let you go to the wrap up first.
So so that's, that's what's going on in the legislative front. So um, there'll be more to come. They'll probably come back.
Nothing on excess cost, as we know. They did not take that on.
No, 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 they did not take that on. They were very um, deliberate this year because again, it is election year. So many are running again in November. So a lot of them shied away from certain, certain bills and certain, certain amendments and certain things. So they purposely did not touch some areas. So we'll see what happens. Um, but you know, you, you, one never knows what's gonna happen. And and of course, they'll be out now and then they'll be in campaign mode, you know, through November. But that is again, something that we all, you know, we campaigned, we advocated on behalf of, you know, the behalf of CADE and 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 crack, you know, throughout the state regarding that area. So um, and and spoke with our legislators about that. So you know, I wish I had more positive news on that, but. That's it. So, okay, what time I picking you up, Neil? Tomorrow?
It's a nine-thirty start. We'll talk after. Sure?
So um, we have, it's part of our packet, the first read of the policy. And then I attended the um, Wellness Committee meeting. I'll let Sue add most of that, but we um, have some, we did a review of some national, some other um, um, school districts across the country. We looked at their um, nutrition programs and I'll let Sue take it from there.
Sure. So we, this is a rejuvenation of our wellness committee. And we have a policy that guides our practices in wellness. And every three years, we have to do a deep dive and use an assessment tool to say where we at. And we publicly share those results on our website. So this committee comes together. There are community members on this uh, committee. Certainly Sharon is our BOE rep, uh, our Director of Health Services, our Director of Nutrition Services, teachers, and we have a student representative from the middle school. So we will be looking at best practices and seeing what improvements we can make to wellness here in Simsbury.
Um, we had a curriculum meeting um, since our last meeting because we um, we continue to curric, the original curriculum committee meeting. Um, talking about uh, assessments for um, students. And so we will, um, we talked about reevaluating our assessment process. And we will, our conclusion was that by, in the fall, we will have a program and a plan in place to how we're gonna assess, how we're gonna figure out our assessment practices, best practices, and what will work best for our students and what are needs of our curriculum.
Just wanna remind everyone that we have an early release day tomorrow across the district for professional learning. So it will be building based and uh, principals are still working hard on their strategic plans and buttoning up things for the remainder of the year. So that's the great work that will be happening tomorrow afternoon.
Um, just to mention that at the end of April, one of our big events of the year, our Staff Recognition Day was a great celebration at Henry James. Um, we celebrated lots of folks who have been with the Simsbury Public Schools for a long time and some of our folks who will be retiring. Uh, one of the other things that I wanna give some public recognition to is it's at that event that we name our Para Educator of the Year. So I wanna publicly congratulate Liz Much, who is a Para Educator at Squadron Line. So um, congratulations to Liz. There are nominees for each building. And then a district committee takes it from there. And um, we have loads and loads of great Para Educators in our district. And um, it's hard to choose one, but this time Liz's application stood out. So congratulations to Liz.
It was a great day. It's very fun to celebrate.
It's great.
Uh, everyone.
I'm sorry, I missed it. And I heard Jen did a fantastic job.
Shannon opened it on behalf of the board. She loves public speaking.
Exactly. We have a spot for her in graduation, I heard.
Yeah, we're gonna tuck her in. It was a lovely day.
I I just wanted to mention one thing briefly also about the General Assembly is because the reimbursement, the construction reimbursement formula, we uh, have an additional five hundred and thirty thousand dollars coming in for the Latimer Construction. So uh, much gratitude to Representative Osborne on her efforts uh, with that. So I just wanna make sure we all.
And I would just add a big piece of the puzzle we solved with the passing of the budget. So I wanna thank everybody that that went out and supported us and thank all the boards um, working through the process together. And certainly tough challenges that the town was faced with. I think an example of a community that comes out and supports its its education. And I think it ties to what you see tonight when we talk about what makes our district special and what makes our district different. Are some of these opportunities um, for kids to explore their passions. And we need to continue to think about that as we uh, as we advocate for more for our programs and our communities.
Okay, so on to recommended actions. First up is the approval of the minutes of the April twenty-third meeting. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Uh, next up is personnel.
So a few things to um, get your vote on tonight. The first is a recently announced retirement of the wonderful Leah Coe, who serves as our preschool supervisor at um, Squadron Line. Been a special education teacher in uh, other capacities in the district before this role. Um, in this role, she is the key person transitioning students, um, uh, our most needy students in many cases from birth to three into our preschool, starting a relationship with some of these families that may last through twenty-two years of age. So she's the one ushering people in for often a very lengthy relationship and just has a special touch with her team. So well deserved retirement. Congratulations to Leah. Um, and the motion is there for your consideration.
I'll move that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Leah Coe effective June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
I second.
Any discussion?
Thank you very much for your passion to each and every one of those students that she's touched.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second item tonight is a resignation um, of Mackenzie Sullivan, no relation. Who, Mackenzie actually started as a long-term substitute last year at Central School when one of our teachers had to go out for surgery and then it extended. Um, and we ended up hiring her and then brought her back for this year. Um, but at this point, Mackenzie um, believes it's time to return home to New Hampshire. So we're glad we got to borrow Mackenzie for two years before she um, heads back to where she's from. Um, so her resignation is effective June thirtieth.
Move that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Mackenzie Sullivan effective June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any votes?
And then two uh, items that we can take together because they are both announcements of an intent to retire three years from now. As you know, the SEA contract allows teachers to give us advance notice of their retirement, which can help in the succession planning process. Um, so two um, long-term educators here in Simsbury. The first is Scott Behringer, who's a math teacher at Henry James. Started at Simsbury High School for a brief period of time, but has really made his home at Henry James for a long time. Um, as you can see on the exhibit, twenty-two years for Scott as of now. And then um, the the reverse is true of Karen Westcott, who was a Simsbury High School teacher when I started, went to Henry James for a while.
I stole her.
And then has come back to Simsbury High School. And um, Karen has been with the Simsbury Public Schools for thirty-three years. So these two have already done fifty-five when you add it up. Um, and they're willing to do six more. Um, the motion is there for your consideration.
I'll move. I'll move that the Board of Education accept the notice of intent to retire of Scott Behringer and Karen Westcott effective June thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
I'll second that motion.
Again, a huge thank you for the longevity and the continuity that they're able to give and the care they gave our students.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, moving on to the negotiations, assuming Neil listens to you too.
This is me too. So we recently entered into negotiations for a three-year um, continuation of the contract with our School Nurses Association. Um, they, they had a six-person team led by Kristen Dobkowski from Squadron Line School um, as their negotiations. Ms. Lumke joined me for the negotiations, which were very successful and um, conducted in a very positive spirit. So the the summary here in your exhibit would indicate first where the general, so a three-year deal, the general wage increases begin for next year in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year with a general wage increase of two point five percent, followed by two point eight percent in the second year and three percent in the third year. There is some additional compensation in years one and two that I'll talk about in a minute. We did um, uh, agree to um, a slight increase in, uh, there's a element already in the contract about if you are a nurse working in a larger school, you get a little bit of a differential and we added a few dollars to that. And then this was just codifying um, the work year of our supervisor. Uh, we, we made a change when Sue Beardsley, that name may be familiar. When she retired, we hired a new supervisor. We came to an agreement about what that year would work, look like, but it wasn't codified in the contract. So this is really just taking care of that. Under health insurance, um, the parties agreed to um, leave the premium cost share the same for this year. And then it would be raised a half a point each in years two and three. Um, those of you who have been on our Personnel and Negotiations Committee know that with our bargaining units, we have been um, um, looking to implement a cost-saving measure about um, pre-certification of more expensive procedures. The nurses group accepted that as one of the uh, important elements of our insurance agreement. A little bit of uh, 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 new, uh, we just had a very important um, teach, nurse in our group, Patty Warner is retiring at the end of this year. She had given us a year's notice of that and it was really helpful for us in succession planning. So we did add language to the contract saying, if you've been with us for a long time and can give us a full year notice, um, it's a, it's a slight stipend to um, help, help us with the planning of that. Uh, brought the dental up to where it is for the teachers. Um, and then here's the other piece of the compensation that's important. This was a group that had not been paid in the past for a lot of holidays. Um, so we did agree to add a paid holiday in year one of the contract. In this case, it'll be New Year's Day and then in year two of the contract. So over the course of the contract, they'll get two additional paid holidays, which is um, about as good as a general wage increase. I mean, it doesn't keep, but it it is a good method of compensation. So I would say that in year one, it was the two point five percent that they agreed to, which was a little lower than some of the other groups, but they also got the holiday. So it was, it, it um, is a very equitable agreement for where we put our other groups. So it was, it, it, um, is, uh, a very equitable agreement for where we put our other groups. Um, and I think that would be sort of where I would end it. The rest is sort of miscellaneous language changes. And I'll leave somebody to make the motion if you're, I'll, happy to answer any questions and then see if you, uh, are ready to take the motion.
Questions for now?
I'll make the motion. Move that the Board of Education ratify the proposed changes in the collective bargaining agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury School Nurses Association for the period July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
I'll second.
Discussion? Quick, quick, how, how big's the unit?
Unit is, uh, thirteen or fourteen members, something like that. One, one nurse and most of our small schools, two with Squadron Henry James at Simsbury High School. But then, as you know from the non-public, we provide nurses in our, in the master school and Cobb School and that's a requirement of the.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. Uh, gift, uh, oh, my, one of my favorite always is accepting gifts, um, this time from the Boosters Club.
Yes, so in accordance with your policy, any gift that Simsbury Schools receive that exceeds one thousand five hundred dollars needs board approval. So tonight, this gift is to the Baseball Booster Club in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. It's from an anonymous donor and the gift will be used for baseball equipment inclusive of a windscreen. So there is a motion there for your consideration this evening.
Move that the proposed gift of twenty-five hundred from an anonymous donor be approved?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think that's great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Great, thank you. Next up is our equity update.
Yes, our annual equity update.
Bachelor's here.
Yes, she is. So, do you wanna tee this up a little bit still?
I would love to. So, it is just so great to have Dr. Tyreshia Bachelor as one of the four directors under the Teaching and Learning Team. And Dr. Bachelor brings such depth and perspective and brilliance to the work to ensure that each and every student in Simsbury gets what they need and has access to the incredible programs and extracurriculars that we offer here in the Simsbury Public School District. So, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Bachelor.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. So I hope that you all had a chance to look at the exhibit. If not, that will give you more detailed information about some of our measures. Um, before I begin, I also want to introduce and acknowledge my partner, Tanisha Grant. She is our open choice liaison. This is her first year. And so she brings a wealth of knowledge, um, as a former social worker, as a community member, as a parent. So I'm really happy to have her on my side and she's my partner. So, just want to acknowledge that a lot of the work that you're seeing here, um, is because of her work and her vision as well. So, thank you publicly for all that you're doing. So I'm gonna start here with our equity drivers. Our equity drivers, which are on the right, show that our equity work is not siloed. Our equity work is in complete response and support of our strategic plan. So, everything that you see on the right is basically the strategies. What we're doing to ensure that at all levels of the organization, we're meeting these goals. So, for instance, in order to have a premier workforce, which is one of the strategic goals, we have to focus on staff retention and staff recruitment. If, if we are spending, um, money on professional learning and bringing people here, but we're not retaining them, then we're not building our capacity. So, our equity drivers again are in, in complete alignment with a strategic plan. The work is not siloed and it's not separate. Next, I wanna make sure that we ground ourselves in what equity means, um, and our vision for equity. So equity is really looking at the way that we see our systems, our structures and our practices. It's the way that we do business. And equity is not just for some students. It's not for one demographic of students. Equity is looking at all of our students. Finding ways to make sure that all of our students are seeing the vision of a graduate, that they have voice, that students are present. So, remember equity is looking at the way that we do our business. So some examples of what equity looks like, um, from the Director of Equity and Access is professional, professional learning. So professional learning for the teachers in terms of equity is the way that the teachers are working in their PLCs. Teachers are looking at data. They're looking at student work. They're asking questions about what all learners need in order to be successful. Our teachers are also looking at what students need beyond Simsbury Public Schools. Um, so there's a big push in our equity and reimagining what our students are going to be doing in the future. Another area that I focus on, if you look at procedures and protocols, some is reactive, um, but a lot is, is planning, planning ahead. So some of the protocol work that I do is working with different department supervisors to see what are some things that we need to put in place to support our teachers and to support, support our students. One example would be a discussion protocol that we, um, developed through the, um, History Department and it's ensuring that all students have voice, um, looking through different perspectives. So we take the VOG and we look at our standards and then we develop protocols to help the students access. Um, again, I'm part of the Teaching and Learning Team, so this work is not siloed. That means that I'm looking at everything through an equity lens. I like the fact that I have a team of people pushing my thinking. I'm pushing theirs. Um, we, we work together in service to the principals and to the teachers. So, our job for Teaching and Learning is to find out what each school needs, um, and support them. So we're in service to them. I wanna really talk about, give you stories today, cuz you have the data. If you look at the exhibit, um, the, the data is presented by other directors and by principals, but I wanna tell a couple of stories if you're gonna allow me to do that tonight. So, there's two stories here, um, if you look at the picture. And one story is the story of a student that's on Equity Council. And this student took a look at the surveys from, um, DEI Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Week and the student said, you know what, Dr. Bachelor, we need to do something so that we're bringing all of, she's, the student said, you're doing a great job of making sure that we have this week, but we need to come together and do more things together. So I said, what would that look like? Um, big part of my work is student advocacy and student voice. Because if we allow the students to tell us what they need and how to do it, then it gets done right. If we try to do it from our lens, our adult lens, then it, a great idea quickly goes wrong if students were not involved. So the student said, well, if you look at the climate survey, Dr. Bachelor, the student said that they wanted more food. I said, okay, great, but again, tie that to the standard and tie it to the VOG. Right, where I, I know that we want food, but tell me more. Let's dig a little deeper. And that's my work. My work is to really help the teachers and the students understand their space and equity and push their thinking the same way that they push mine. So, the student came up with the idea of the Taste of Simsbury. So, here's a story of another student, a shy student who is in the Culinary Department with Ms. Jerga and, um, doesn't like to speak or like to be in the spotlight, but a student that really thinks through planning. Um, and that student did all of the planning, most of the planning. Um, and you wouldn't believe what goes into, um, hosting a Taste of Simsbury. Like they, there was a budget. They had to look at, um, the, the different allergies. But this was an example of a great event through equity, through the lens of two different students who were champions in the work. Um, and the result was we had seventy-six students sign up to come. We lost count of how many, um, adults were coming because they had a ticket, but they were coming more than once. And the places that were represented were Dominican Republic, Puerto Rico, China, Poland, France and Italy. And so this is ju- just an example.
And they prepared food based upon those backgrounds and they broke bread and shared and talked to each other and learned about each other's backgrounds and cultures and food and.
Absolutely. And the other thing about equity is, is not to say that one culture dominates another, but also just finding what's common. So one of the things that they learned was that there's food staples and a lot of different cultures that are similar. Um, and so like this was a great way to celebrate. There was music, games, candy. The candy didn't go over so well. But, and, and then students were together. Students were sitting together, talking together. Students that during different lunch wave would not ordinarily be sitting together and having a conversation. So the next area, my title is Equity and Access, right? So, access to me is really that accountability measure for me to say, am I making sure? Are we making sure that all of our students have a way, uh, entry point to all these guaranteed experiences? Now, access to academics is not just something that i- is a given. We assume that we have great academics here. We have great policies. We have great practices and all students are engaged. But sometimes students need additional support. Sometimes students need motivation. Um, and the, the great thing that I've learned about access through the students is that it changes. So, in one year, the partnerships that we have in enrichment and after-school programs that we have for students, um, are, are things that students want and then it quickly changes. So access is really about finding ways to make sure that all of our students have an entry point. And I can't wait to show you some access points, um, later when we start talking about our students. So equity markers. How do we know that the things that we are doing is working? Now, you know with equity, it's, it's different work than our math and reading where you have specific, um, data points. Now, although there's no specific data point for equity, there are equity markers to let us know how we're doing along the way. And so I started my work by looking at the recommendations that came from the Equity Council before I came and they, they took a data dive and they came up with some really gr- great recommendations. So following through those recommendations and looking at all students, this is how we look at our markers so we can see how we're doing along the way. So, there's two things that I, I want to talk about here. And one is the enrollment and honors and enrichment or advanced courses. And one of our markers is to increase that for different populations over time. And we do this how? We do this through the things that you saw on the other slide. Making sure that there's professional learning for the teachers, making sure that teachers have time to talk together, to share practices, making sure that once students are enrolled in our honors and enrichment courses, that the teachers also have support with helping all of the students. Um, we also did work with the school counselors to find students who could be in the courses, but were not taking the courses to find out why, to, to find out how we can support them. While that's happening, we're also reducing, which is the second point, the second bullet, we're reducing the percentage of students that are enrolled in basic and remedial courses. Um, and another area here was looking at our English language learners. Um, and one of the things that I wanna mention also is that as we do this work for some students, it actually benefits all students. So when teachers are looking at, how do I have conversations with, um, our Hispanic students that are excelling, but are, are not seen in the, in these courses? What are some, those conversations are some of the same conversations that I need to have with other students. Um, so these practices, again with equity, have us constantly thinking about what are we doing for all students?
So one question on that one. So is this, when it says, uh, fifteen percent within, that's three years going forward?
Yes. So another equity marker, um, is to take a look at our suspensions. And as we know that there is a disproportionality rate amongst suspensions for students based on race, but there's also disproportionality of suspensions based on whether students are in general education or whether they're in special education. And, um, I want you to know also that some students fall into more than one category. Um, so i- it's important to look at this. Now, this is not something that is a, something that is just unique to Simsbury. Around the country, people are taking a look at this data. Um, and one of the things that we found is that when we have students that are, that are not engaged in extracurricular activities, if they don't have mentorship, if they're going straight home and they're not connected to the school community, those students are more likely to, to, to have, they're more likely to have disciplinary referrals. From a teacher's lens, we took a look at what are students being referred to? And so this is the work of the Teaching and Learning Team. We spent a lot of time this year talking about discipline, talking about behavior, talking about tiered instruction, um, and trying to learn from the data. What is the data telling us? What can we do differently for some of our students? Um, how are we engaging them? What conversations are we having with our students?
Can I ask a quick question about this? The look that you took, was it from K-12 or it's just a high school lens?
So we look at a K-12 because that's a very good question. Thank you. Because a lot of times the, the data will show, if we look at data just from one lens, which is why we're always gonna look at it from multiple, multiple measures and multiple people at the table, if we just look at our data, you might find, or you might assume, that it's mostly the middle school students that have the, the high rates of discipline. But discipline comes in many forms. So it's not just when a teacher writes a student up and there's a, a office referral or a student is suspended. Yes, that is a data point, but we're also looking at what's happening at our elementary schools. How many students are spending time with our, with our counselors or, or time in, in the office talking about their behaviors? Or how much time does it take to redirect students? Um, are students feeling comfortable in the classroom? So we're looking at different data points, not just suspensions, but this is our overall suspensions. It would appear that it's more so for high school and middle school because that's where students get suspended, but we go all the way back to what is the story that's happening before that? What are some of the things that the students are being suspended for? Um, one is even unpacking students that are disrespectful. So there, there are some different types of equity data that we need to look at. We have to look at culturally, um, the, our linguistic learners. We have to look at it from many different angles of why different students are being quote-unquote disrespectful. Um, let's understand what that means. Um, is it because they're disconnected? Uh, i- is it something that we as a community, community can do to change that? And we do have a couple of things that we're gonna do to change that.
Jess, I'd love, appreciate that question. So are you seeing, um, trying to figure out how to really ask this quick, are, are you seeing maybe the students who, let's say, have had a history of discipline? Let's say they had started in elementary and just kept going through high school. Are you, is that sort of population and, and are you able to drill down and say, boy, if we caught just this in, in second grade, whatever, making it up, right, we really could have had maybe a little bit more success with this individual?
Well, we can see trends. We can see, um, we can see that some students over time, uh, have had mul- have needed multiple supports. Um, and so it's looking at, were those the right supports? Um, did we have them in certain supports for longer than other students? When do they enter into support? We look at, um, how we, how the families are involved and engage and what other ways can we bring the families into our conversations? So through that, some of the Teaching and Learning Team has looked at the SIP process thus. Um, so what happens before students are referred to the process? So, yes, we can see some trends over time.
So one of the things that we had talked about when we were having some of those, um, earlier conversations is, um, ensuring that we're also looking at, are, you know, if a student is being sent to the office, are they being sent to the office from the same teacher, right? Because it could, is it, you know, the cultural thing or is it that one teacher versus another looks at, you know, behavior differently, right? Cuz it can be something. Um, and so you're still incorporating that as well?
Yes, and I, I think, um, the other thing that we need to look at also is the way that we have these conversations. So that, that's, that's my, my work. Um, we use different protocols. One is a problem of practice. When a, a principal or a teacher can talk about, um, a problem or something that they're, that, that they haven't solved. And sometimes it is different types of student discipline in a building. So it could be students using language. It could be students eloping. It can be students leaving from the cafeteria. Um, using a problem of practice helps get everybody in because everyone has to be involved in the solution, not just identifying what the problem is. Um, so our work through our PLCs and. Um, so our work through our PLCs and problem of practice is to really ask the question is, what is it that we're trying, what is the problem that we're trying to solve? Um, who is impacted by it? And what are, what are the strategies that we've already used and what strategies are working for some? Um, what are not working for others? And what are some ways that we can, that we can make some some changes and some shifts to see if those work for for our students? And again, it's another example of, once we start focusing focusing on something for one group of students, it impacts positively um other students. So I'm gonna start talking about our encouraging words campaign, um, which is one example of of how to work on, we're working on several things at this, at the same time. We're working on language, we're working on a community, we're working on um families and community working together. Um, we we've identified that language could be hurtful. Um, and so that's an example of the ways that we can uh attack this. Um, it's not just looking at individual students. Now, there are some students that are tier three students that are receiving other support, but when we look at our disproportionality, the the rate at which some of our students are being suspended is still much higher than others. And and again, that's not a Sims, that's not just Simsberry, that's overall.
But I just, and you can move on, but I think the thing that you're pointing out too makes a difference is um, the cultural competence competency part of it, right? Because what one may look at as being disrespectful may not really be, it just may be, you know, how we engage, right?
And we're also trying to, um, you know, through through uh through the work that we're doing, we're also trying to make sure that everyone is is aware of what a welcoming and belonging environment feels like for everyone. So uh some students will say to me, it's okay for me to say certain things or do certain things because I'm within the comfort of my group, and I have to help them to understand that we are a community of all, of everyone. And although you might not be impacted by something that someone says, or the way that someone is responding, there is an impact to the larger group. And so again, it's coming together as a community to recognize that. And and that's what diversity is, right? Diversity is not a dirty word, diversity is just different. So I, there are some things about me that's different than things about you, and how do we come together and make sure that this is a s- a safe space? That's gonna motivate everyone to to be their best and show that's who they are. The more you do that, the less disruption we're gonna have, because then I have a mutual respect when I can say, mm, that doesn't feel right to me, let's change that, right? And then you might get the doctor be like, okay, you gonna knock that off, right? Um, but again, those things are built over time.
One question on the enrollment, um, the exhibit, the numbers we can talk about. The fifteen percent in three years, right, that goal, it's like an ambitious goal, it's a good goal, right? Just look at the numbers in the exhibit. So when we say twenty one to twenty two, and then compare it to twenty three to twenty four, is that one year or two years? Because there's no like twenty two to twenty three, so I'm just curious there. Because the numbers add up to about four, maybe five percent. And if you, if that's over two years, right, like you're four to five percent over two years, how do you get to fifteen and three? Or if that's just one year, then you're on track. And I ask that not for like technical detail. Do you feel like the plan is in place that just needs to maybe now gain traction and kind of snowball? Or do you feel like the plan still needs some reworking? So it's kind of like a two-part.
Right. So the the first thing that I looked at was our student population and how how much our student population had changed for those groups of students over time. And we have one population of students, our our Hispanic students, that has grown over the last two years. And um, and the way that they grew is not just from students coming from Hartford or Open Choice, but students that are living in the district. So there were students that we had not identified or thought of as maybe being linguistic learners or maybe having some cultural differences, because most of the time, if you look at some students, you cannot always tell um that, you know, their intersectionality, their their backgrounds. So when we, when I started to look at our Hispanic students and our Black students and see how how they were changing over time and how many were um high school students that were gonna be graduating, that's how I made the marker in terms of if if we keep these groups of students here, if they don't move because they love living in Simsberry, if they stay in 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 open choice because they know that we're providing a quality education, that they belong here and that they're welcomed here, if we keep these group of students with the with the um plans that we have in place, that we've already been working through, our teachers are on year three of some of the trainings. Our principals are on year year two of developing um the these plans for culture and climate. So yes, we are on the way, and also the population had changed since then, so I I factored that in. Ambitious, but again, not doing this alone, and I think um even putting a number to it makes um every everyone aware and accountable to what we're trying to do. And it also doesn't mean, I don't want people to think that it means that we are gonna purposely not suspend or are are not disciplined or redirect students because of the data. It means that we're conscious of the fact that there are some differences that we need to acknowledge before there is a concern. It means that we're taking a look at um understanding our students and and building things and supports in before problems happen.
Just to go back to the, oh, sorry, Jen, did you wanna? Okay, just to go back to the um the goals set in place for moving students into honors classes and out of remedial classes. The the work that you you and your team are doing, are you drilling that down? Because we all know kids get tracked, right? You go into a middle school and you're on a math track and an English track, and that leads them to high school. Are you, are you pushing things down to the elementary school level to kind of help fulfill that goal?
So at the elementary, at the elementary um level, what we're doing is making sure that students that have historically been in intervention for a long time have a a way to get out, so that they have a path to have access to those classes. So it's looking at the the tutoring, how long they're in um intervention. Um, we do have Think Math, which um will allow us to to take a different look at how we assess students and how we give feedback to students. So that's happening at the elementary school, and at the middle school is where, I think that's where I can answer your question, where we're taking a look at the tracks that students are, that they are in in math, and finding ways to um work with the teachers to support students so that they can have the courses that they need before they get to high school. So elementary is making sure that they have the skill set to do the work. Middle school is making sure that they have the endurance, that teachers are supporting them. Some of the students just need study, study skills. Um, some of the students need organization, some need um their parents to understand the work that they have to do so that um they they can support them at home and we're we're communicating the same expectations. Some students need to stay after school, some students need to to work through lunch at times when you'll see our tutoring program. Some students need to work through lunch, but they can bring a friend with them, um because they need to know how to advocate and ask for help and support. Um, a lot of times, the elementary students are stuck because they're, they don't have, they don't have access, and they're in the cycle of intervention. So once we, so we're we're hitting it at all levels and and hoping that that will make some of the changes.
Let me, let me jump in here. Let's go to Jen, and then we still have quite a bit of the presentation, so so let's, let's keep rolling.
Okay, so here, looking at honors courses, and I'm I'm gonna s- tell some stories again. Um, so honors courses, if we look at our enrollment from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three, the increase for our Black students and the one point for special education, although it seems marginal, those are big changes, because what it represents is seats. So I put the chair there to remind me of how I was gonna explain this. Typically, because what I want to show is typically, what we want to do is see that more students can sit in these seats. So it's not to say that every student who has an IEP or who is in special education is going to sit in a seat, but we have students that may have an IEP and they're working through some things in reading, but they could be phenomenal in math and they need the encouragement and the support. So some of the students with the right supports, and we are based on um equity and making sure that every student has what they need, can now access these honor courses. So this is an example of, yes, we're we're showing that there are some students who before were not accessing these courses, who are now accessing them. The same with our advanced courses, and advanced courses, and I I had to look this up. I was like, okay, which are the advanced? Because I I guess I'm not that advanced in some of these areas, but this is looking at our pre-cow, our physics to our advanced theater, transitional Spanish, um some of our honors courses are English, French, and our Latin courses. Um, and here, a- again, it's, when we talk about equity and we talk about all students and different student groups, we're not just talking about race, we're talking about socioeconomic status, we're talking about students that are in special education. And I have one student who falls into multiple categories, who said that teachers with compassion understand my complexities. Um, and and I and I know where that word came from, that word came from um working with Ms. Grant, if I will say so, Ms. Grant works with this student. Um, and just having that person to sit with the student, and that person, one of the people was Ms. Grant, to help the student organize, and no, if you take this course, I'm going to be working with you, I'm gonna be right along with you to help you organize, to check along the way, to talk to the teachers, to make sure that the teachers, um, teachers need su- support too, they have a a lot of students. Um, and so making sure that the teachers, sometimes teachers need a a a extra period to sit with a student. Um, so sometimes it's covering class for fifteen minutes so you can meet with a student. So that that is one of the stories, and I, and I want to go to a, so I showed you some equity indicators, some measures of success. And now I want to show you a snapshot. So going back to some of our measures, one is a- again, the discipline. Um, so one of the things that we're using to tackle the the discipline and the academics at the same time is our mentoring program. Last year, we started the Legacy Program, which was a great partnership. We are still in partnership with Legacy. Um, our students go there on on Saturday, but Tanisha and I said, you know, we need to develop our own mentoring program because it's great to have someone from the outside come in, but what do students really need? Students need someone right there all the time um to to be the support. So our new model that we developed um is a model where our, we have middle school students, and this was our trial year, it's going well. Our middle school students, um, they they have a mentor, and the mentor, the first co- component is that they meet with the parents. So every month, they talk to the parents, and it could be virtual, it could be on the phone, but there has to be some parent communication. And the reason why I wanted that is because it's also breaking down barriers sometimes, and we think that it's overwhelming for our students in middle school, it's equally overwhelming for our parents. Um, so having that one person that they know that they can talk to and say, you know, I got a call, can you check on this for me? Having the teachers know that if there's anything that I need to work on to support the student, let me know. Having that one person has been really beneficial. The students have to write um in their journal um at the end of each month, and they have to send it to Tanisha and I. And this is just some examples. We have students that um, we're working on goal setting, so they set a goal, and then their mentors help them to achieve the goal, and they're, they give them some real time, like, okay, you know why you didn't reach that goal, right? Um, and this is a life skill, like, how how many, how many of us need to work on goal settings? So they're learning this life skill early um through this mentoring program. Uh, in the beginning of the mentoring program, it was really important about building relationships and understanding who the the students were. Uh, students were like barely talking, and um so we had them bring a friend with them, because again, um, although my partner is an Open Choice liaison, she works with with our students, so bring a friend. Um, th- this is a community, and they started to bring a friend, and so we're hoping to expand the program next year. Um, another example, I I think I've mentioned it before, is our campaign that we're gonna launch, our encouraging words campaign. Um, so I started by talking to some students about um whether or not they, what what they thought we should do about the language and some of our buildings. Now, I know you don't believe that students have language that they're using in buildings, but sometimes they do. Um, and my concern is 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 always, I don't want to do something to students that they don't appreciate, I have to do this with students. So I started by just asking students whether they thought this was a good idea, and and I'll tell you some things that they said. But the the idea is to have a committee of about fifteen members. Um, I've already sent some things out to parents, I have some um parents from Latimer, where's the other one? Terrifil and Squadron, um who are joining me in the committee. And we're gonna build this, like, it's gonna be a year-long K twelve. We are telling people that we are going to be using encouraging words. Um, we're, we're going to have um students, the high school students. It's funny, when I met with them, they're like, oh yeah, that's a good idea because elementary kids need it. I'm gonna go with that, I'm gonna go with that. So they came up with all these great ideas, they said we're They said they're gonna make skits, um, they're gonna make PSA, so they have all of these great things that they want to do for the elementary students, but at the same time, that will help them too, right? Um, so I'm working with Legacy Foundation, Deacon Art will help me on the community side, because I think it's a community thing. It's a way to bring everyone together. Um, Meg Evans is the elementary principal working with me. Um, at the middle school, the guidance counselor is working with me, and at the high school, the National Chinese Honor Society, so I'm excited about this. Hope you can hear them.
Go.
Hi, um, my name is Natasha, and I think this campaign is important because it can
Go.
Hi, um, my name is Natasha, and I think this campaign is important because it can cause people to want to burn themselves or other people and make them be depressed.
Hi, my name is Azariah. I think this campaign is important because a lot of people don't know what they're saying and how it can impact people and how they like can affect people at the end of the day.
And that was short, but these are two middle school students who were shy, um, who at first said they didn't want to be on camera, and I think one, her, I think her parent actually said, you need to do this. But I'm I'm trying to show them that, you know, they have voice, that people respect their words, that people are listening to them. And so I'm hoping that these are two students who will join and do the PSA. I also, I'll send these around, um, these are from uh elementary, from Latimer Lane. So um in each school, I I also um mentor a student from each elementary school. And and I go in and I work with them and their class, and so we did two activities, um, because I I have to ask kids, do you want to do this campaign? And this is, this one is from um this the student that I mentor. Um, but the the whole class was like, yes, we need to do it, we they, we did an activity. Um, Ms. Eddie did an activity, the toothpaste activity, have you heard of that? Right? So you do the toothpaste and you squirt it and everything comes out, and then now you gotta try to get everything back in the tube. Can't get it back in. So um her whole presentation was, that's what happens when you say hurtful words. And and so really getting kids to understand the meaning at 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 a early age. Um, and so those are some of the things that came out of the class. So I'm excited about um about next year and and doing this campaign. And and I have no idea what it's what it's gonna look like. I mean, I have an idea, I have a vision, but um it's really gonna be up to the students in the committee.
You have a lot of voice.
So so some of the glow, some of the things that um I I think I could be proud of this year, and I can say that, yes, we're hitting some of our markers and we're we're doing the work. Um, one is our employee resource groups. I I mentioned before that we have a BIPOC group. Next year, we're gonna have two employee resource groups, and the second group will be determined based on an interest survey that the staff take. Um, one of the things that we did this year was we, um, Neil, Neil and I worked with our new teachers, and we sent them a survey um to see their sense of belonging, to see, are we living up to what we promised they were gonna experience um working here in Simsberry? Um, and so we got a lot of great feedback, and and they felt that um we were listening to them, we were hearing them, we don't just hire them, and then, okay, see you at the end of next year, and then you tell us how it goes. So we're making sure that we we check in on them. Um, the mentoring program that I mentioned, our increasing educated diversity plan, um, some of the things that have come out of that plan is also looking at uh how we find talent and and how through the questions that we ask teachers, we actually find out what their talents are be- before they come to us. Um, the reallocation and repurpose of existing choice grants, so in the report, you will see that there were some shifts that we made, we were able to provide some books from the, some decorable books at ev- every elementary school. Um, then Tanisha and I wrote some some grants, so we got um funding over ninety five thousand dollars for the Summer Middle School Academy.
That's just some grant, that's significant grand dollars.
We just found out that we got a a much smaller grant, four hundred dollars for um marketing, it's it's for marketing. Um, but you know, every opportunity we can get, um, also um changing, making some shifts in Tanisha's role. Her hours are ten to six, I'm sure the principals appreciate that. Kids now have more access to sports and food and transportation and the after school because she's there. Um, and she's not just there for choice students, for all students, um, because, you know, Um, and she's not just there for choice students, for all students, um, because you know, s- students, now all students can go home. And between sports and there's a place for them to go and she likes to feed them. Um, a- another is our K twelve everyday speech curriculum. Um, that's one of the things that the high school students are working with me to identify which lessons. Are gonna be taught um, during the connect period. So those are some of the glows from the year and next steps, and again, equity work I, I started with. Is in alignment with our, our strategic goals and I'm gonna end there, so under sustainable strategic investments. Rebooting the Equity Council. Um, some of our members are going to, to be leaving, they've, they've been on for, for a, a while and some students are graduating. So we wanna look at, we had great recommendations, we have data. Where, where are we, what are some of our next steps and, and looking at our measures of success? Um, I wanna de- develop a framework, um, I have some draft plans of a framework so that. We can really make it public in terms of what we mean by equity and what we're working on, so that will include showing what our partnerships are, showing how we get feedback. Communication. Under student growth and success, um, I, I won't be redundant, but, but the big one is the encouraging words campaign. Um, and for connected school culture, I wanna expand the mentoring program and take some aspects of the mentoring program. That teachers can, can then use with individual students that they're working with through the SIP program. And through our premier workforce, um, continue to work on our increasing educated diversity plan. Um, and again, that, that is a, a plan that we had to submit through the state. Um, Sue and Matt a- attended uh, great conferences with me this, this year on equity, so thank you for. Being at, for attending with me. Um, I've also presented at ASPA and I was on a panel, could be on a panel again next month. So I, I think what we're doing is the right fit. So, thank you for your support and. For the policies that you have in place and for, for always supporting the work for all of our students.
All right, real quick, I just want, you always do a great job with, you know, demonstrating coherence of the board goals. I just wanna say publicly from a timing standpoint, for our board and our administration and your work, as we head into that. Development process next year, we really have a great opportunity to um, kinda quantify some of these things. Targets, goals, and just, we're doing the work, but make it clear from top to bottom that, that it's the priority, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so I had a question, which was. First. Oh my god. Amazing and thank you so much. And so I almost embarrassed asking this question, but it's like, do you, do you, like on that discipline one? You went, you stated about, yeah, the twenty percent reduction um. For black and white students by twenty percent and Hispanics by twenty-five. I was just curious, do, do you ever take a step further back to say just by gender, like? How much higher the male discipline is versus female and? Was that too broad and?
No, I think, and it depends on the school, so these are the overall um, broad based when looking at the district. But individual principals are asking those questions when, when you see a discrepancy between boys and girls. Um, the same with, with classes. I think we're moving a- away from looking at gender as much and looking at um, the way that students present. We have some, we have some students that um. That have historically had more suspensions than others, so for those particular student, it's not. It's more so, how can we decrease the amount of referrals for that particular student, right? So, because s- I, I wouldn't want people to say that, oh, but the, it's because of those five kids. So if those five kids were not here, we'll have a great climate and culture. But those things change over time, so it's looking at, if you're a principal, I might look at five students. Who, who I, I'm passionate about helping them to not struggle as much. Um, and I want them to spend more time with the classroom teacher than, than outside, so I, I'm gonna look specifically at their data. Um, the time of day, is it during different, um, different, like, I would, if I'm gonna act up, I'm gonna act up in math, right? I might need to get out of math class, so, right, so I, identifying where it's happening and, and, and trying to figure out what the root cause is. And that happens with the teaching and learning team too, you know, we, we talk about different data points, does it look different for different schools? And then what happens when all of those, those systems that you have in individual schools? Now they all come to the middle school for two years and what happens there. Um, so those are the conversations that, that happen at the teaching and learning team. But yes, for some of the boys, it's more individualized. Um, and, and then also giving students the grace to make changes, so. If some things happened and, and Tanisha's already working with some students that are gonna be going to the middle school. Already predicting, what are some of the things we need to put in place, some of it is just acknowledging that. There were some, some difficult things that happened in elementary school. Here, here's gonna be some different things that might occur next year. And that's what the Summer Middle School Academy is like, stopped me from talking, like, a, a big part of that is that social piece. Um, we're gonna be at, at the middle school. Um, and so our principals, we had our EP, the principals were already identifying students who would be great for that program because we wanna give them a head start of. This is what it's like here, right, this is what it's like.
Set up for success.
One follow-up. So just kinda back to my other question, I know a lot of late, but slide twenty-seven has the numbers I was kinda referencing, so just. Also make sure I'm clear on the, the goal we're saying, right? Is that the goal, no, the one, the next one, the chart. So is the goal to get fifteen percent increase on this slide? On numbers that if I'm reading this right, over the past two or three years, has only gone up to three percent. Because that's why I'm, why I was getting at on the traction versus the plan unless I'm reading it, cuz that.
So these are two, these, those are two different measures. So this is a measure of the percentage of honor courses. And what we want here is to see that more of, we wanna make sure that students that are black, Hispanic and, and special education. Have more opportunities to sit in seats in honor courses. And so when, when I came here and that was one of the recommendations of the Equity Council. We took a look at why were these populations of students not enrolled in honors courses? And so a lot of that work was done with the counselors, um, conversations with families, with students, and so that's what you see here. Now the other, um, this is.
Yeah, this one, yep.
Yep. So, we want to, and we want to increase from the number. By fifteen percent with three years, so that's fi- that's five percent each year. And again, if you look at where, if I can tell you where some of our students are now. Who have had the conversations with their counselors, their school counselors and their parents. More students are going to be taking those courses because, again, I started with, how many students based on? The As and Bs that they're getting in their current courses could be in honor courses and that number was high.
So Josh, you had asked the question whether or not, hey, is it different now because there's structures in place? And now you're gonna work the structures, so the answer to that question is yes, so that we can be rigorous, rigor. Rigorously trying to obtain that higher percentage.
I think that's great, and then the reason I asked the follow-up on it, cuz I think two things. Number one, if we reach that goal, led by you. That's pretty amazing to say, if you take a step back and say a number that went up three percent in three years before a plan was put in place. Then escalated to fifteen percent in three years. That's good in any business, anything, anywhere, that three percent growth became fifteen percent growth in that same amount of time, right? And so that's why I just asked, is it traction, is it just getting that momentum going? It sounds like, like anything, right, the plan's in place, get the momentum going. Yeah, I just wanna circle back just to kinda show it, since it's on screen, that you're looking to do is take a number that moved three percent in three years.
To go to five percent. Well, five percent each year.
Right.
But, but again, if, if we look at how many, but if we look at how many students. Could have been in honor courses, that percentage was, that percentage was high.
Yeah, I think it's a fantastic thing to sh- write to show. I guess it's a combination of these numbers in retrospect probably should have been higher, is what I'm hearing. If things were in place.
Yes.
But then taking that and then growing it, either way, what you're doing is taking our student population here. And giving that opportunity that wasn't happening and that's, that's impressive and ambitious, so I think everyone should just kinda seeing those numbers. Is impressive, so, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate what's going on.
Thank you, Tanisha.
And thank you, Tanisha. I love your shirt. The minute I walked in, it's so favorite, it's great.
I think the pants are better.
The shirts are.
I'm a Dolphins fan.
But what does your shirt say?
Silk color.
Oh, nice.
Right, that's good stuff.
Absolutely.
Now I feel bad for like my pants.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Bachelor, thank you, Ms. Grant.
Next up is the proposed fee schedule.
Yeah. An exciting follow-up to our equity presentation. I get to talk to you about something we have not reviewed in a couple of years here, which is the fee schedule for the schools. There, I think, this is something we, we used to look at more regularly. We got off track, um, actually when we weren't renting out our schools during COVID. There was a pretty long period of time where we weren't um, inviting as many groups into our schools. So it is definitely time to take a look at it. Um, this, we've simplified the document for long-term board members who used to, there used to be. Um, different levels of fees. Um, I work on this with Carol Mitchell, who's our business office coordinator. Um, it was very confusing for all about which level of it, so we just decided to come up with a universal fee structure. So when you get into the document past the exhibit page, you can see we're looking at a four-page document. The first page and a half is what it costs to rent out a space in our elementary and middle school. Um, and um, I will note that the major addition to this, since the last time the board reviewed it. Is that we needed to come up with a fee for our Henry James Auditorium. We didn't have one before. Um, Carol and I, at the time that we did start renting it out, made it a fee equivalent to the main gymnasium. Just said, let's put that as a fee, we, that's the fee we've been charging. Um, but I want this to be able to be reviewed by the board. Um, if you don't, you know, if you have different opinions about what we should be charging. Mostly what we do on this is put a very minor increase, about two percent a year. Just to cover costs of utilities and, and maintenance, I'll talk a little bit more about the labor. For the most part, if our building is already open, we tend not to charge you to use a space. Um, there are exceptions to that, but if certainly, if a community group is using. I mean, there's not that much opportunity during the week cuz um, most of our buildings are, are u- used. Um, certainly in the middle school and high school are, by our interscholastic athletic program. But um, certainly Sims Berry Youth Basketball might use a gym during the week at Central School. Um, if the building is already open, we're not charging you. Cuz it's already open, the custodian is there, you know, that's how, that's, and it's a community organization. Um, where we tend to charge is if you are, um, we are opening the building for you. Uh, and um, we do have pretty substantial fees from two different um. Religious, two different churches in town that use our, and that pay pretty substantial fees. To, uh, one to run CCD on Sunday mornings, um, one of the churches in town runs its CCD program through our classrooms. And then another church has.
Christian.
Christian education, yeah. Um, and then another church has uh, taken to renting our auditorium on most Sunday mornings. And other times, they rent the cafeteria right after and we have charged them those fees. Um, and they've been, they pay them and they're, it's a good, it's, it's a source of revenue. Um, for the district when, when.
It's a great fit when your community can use our buildings for sure.
Yeah, yeah, and Sunday morning, using the Henry James Auditorium, it makes sense for that group. We're, we're not using it on Sunday morning, so, um. So the auditorium isn't, ad- auditorium is a significant add. When you look on pages two, halfway through the second page or the third page, that's where the high school comes in. I would say, um, becau- like, if you wanna use the high school on um. A Saturday, it's pretty difficult, on a Sunday. Uh, um, w- we do have community organizations rent it out. We don't usually charge for the facility, but we will charge a custodial fee. So if I could draw your attention to the fourth page, this is where we actually generate more of the fees. And you can see that, um, that we have custodial fees. Audio tech fees, and then if you need to use a kitchen, people can't just come in and use our kitchen, one of our. Nutrition services folks have to be there. Um, so what we're more charging you for is the labor that it costs to open the building and to be there. Um, that with, uh, that, that I would say, um. Is where more of these fees come, the actual rental fees are primarily the religious. Uh, services that rent them and a few smattering in the rest of the year when a special gr- I mean, we've had the, we've had. Places like dance recitals that wanna come in and use it and, well, we'll charge you a fee and, um, it all works out. And um, it's not a tremendous amount of revenue over the course of the year. But um, certainly, the reason why we charge mu- like, the overtime to bring a custodian in on a Sunday. Which is a pretty significant cost, should not be borne by our operating budget. Has to be borne by the people who are asking us to open the building. So, that's what I have to say about that, we would vote, it's typically come in front of you and then we vote on it in two weeks.
So I just have one question.
Sure.
Go back to your comment about the main gymnasium and Henry James, cuz I'm looking at both main gymnasium, the cost and then the Henry James.
The main gymnasium at Henry James.
So, yes, cuz if, unless I'm looking at old, yeah, the main gymnasium. It's two fifty-two, sixty, right? But then the, you said we synced it up with the main gymnasium cost, which this is three twenty-one?
The auditorium.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yep. The, um, two questions, one is, is that, do I understand then that so town basketball? Does not pay since we're, if they have practice during the week because we're already open?
Correct.
And so we would still, we would charge them for custodian or we don't even charge them for that?
We charge them typically at Henry James and Sims Berry High School on the weekends. Uh, I, I just, we just got the Sims Berry Youth Basketball Bill put together because it's extensive all winter long. And I don't think there was a single weeknight thing on there. It was all the weekend when we have to keep the building open in order for Sims Berry Youth Basketball to finish, yeah.
And then for elementary schools and Henry James for the gymnasium or whatever. Do we chart, like Latimer, the elementary, like, wouldn't you think we would get more for a Latimer than we would for Terrifil? Although I love Terrifil.
We're gonna have to, I would think we're gonna be renting Latimer Gymnasium.
Pretty full, not totally full-size, but that would be a very good, very good.
It's big, yeah.
It's beautiful.
So I'll, Carol, Carol and I for next year will need to come up with a fee for Latimer's, um.
Spaces.
New spaces.
Yeah.
I, I, the gym, I don't think anybody will rent anything other than the gym.
Do we charge for use of the fields?
Um, we, um. S- s- mo- most of the fields are town space, we do have a, we do have a fee for the turf that is occasionally.
Okay.
Utilized, yeah.
Oh, but, so the fields at like our mount- elementary schools, those are town fields?
Pretty much.
I see, okay, I didn't realize that.
And they maintain, there's a contract that they maintain all the large fields, even the turf.
Okay.
We would like Terrifil Schools, Ron, be part of the soccer, just like Squadron, I'm just saying.
No, it is, what's next?
May not be enough grass on that field.
Talking about.
Anything else? Great.
See what you're doing.
Uh, textbooks?
Alright, so each new spring. All right, so each new spring, the Board of Ed, we always do a preview now with Curriculum Committee. Oh, you have a little, you have one to pass down for me, Lydia, thank you. Everyone would be so gracious. Um, they're always previewed by Curriculum Committee, and then they come forward to the full Board of Education. So, um, there's not a vote tonight, but I wanna share with you what's on the docket for adoption. And then if you would like to come and borrow, look at any of the, the texts here, please feel free to just contact me, and we'll make sure that that happens. There are three texts that are coming forward for our Asian American Studies course. Uh, you may recall, this is an early college experience course. This is a course that was written, um, with the teacher, Michelle Henry, in conjunction with staff at UConn. And she was featured in Ed Week, and there's been a lot of phenomenal press on this. This course last year was in pilot, it is coming out of pilot now after a year. So, uh, three texts for your consideration. Again, no vote tonight, but we will vote, um, at the end of May. The next is you, um, have received presentations about Think Mathematics. So, these are the Think Math texts for grades one through five. Um, they are doing some updates and some revisions, nothing that would look incredibly different from these texts. But as they are new, moving from math and focus to think, we will have to adopt that text series, okay? And there is, and I made this to be a separate kind of textbook adoption. The kindergarten version of Think Mathematics is called Developing Roots. It's very much a play-based, math-centered, and it's truly developing those foundational skills. So, as they are not called Think Mathematics, but Developing Roots, I'm putting this under, it falls under Think in the curriculum series, but I'm separating this out as separate texts. So, in the, um, exhibit tonight, you will see on the back of that exhibit, all of these texts clearly denoted. Uh, again, two weeks of review, they've been brought to Curriculum Council before, I always make sure that we're doing that. So, they can ask any questions about the texts, and then we will have a motion for your consideration on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm excited, this is where I get my summer reading from every year, so.
It's good.
It's good.
Thank you. Uh, policy?
Yep, so it's the time of year where we typically approve the, um, board, updates to Board of Ed policies that have been, uh, reviewed with the Policy Committee. So, the Policy Committee met twice, I think once at the end of February, once at the end of March, to review, um, two different kinds of policies. One, which is, um, miscellaneous policies that needed attention because of changes in the legislature or other things that we noted that needed update. And then, from time to time, we do a full policy series. So, in this case, the Policy Committee looked at the two thousand administrative series, which is about, a lot about the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent of schools. So, um, the, so I'm gonna go down the list and just give you a brief explanation. The process, um, for this is always a little cumbersome, because we do a policy first reading tonight. There's a chance to ask questions for a second reading two weeks from now when we meet, and then you don't get to vote on them till June. So, it takes three steps for us to approve this, which, um, always seems laborious, but we're gonna get through it. We're gonna do just fine. So, um, two very minor changes to your Board of Ed bylaws, which is actually, um, not a numbered series, but it sits at the front of the policy book. The first was, um, a note that we listed five standing committees. We don't have five standing committees of the board. The Wellness Committee was improperly listed as a board committee. It's not really a Board of Education Committee, as we spoke about earlier tonight. It's a district committee where one of your members sits as a representative. So, your board committees remain curriculum, the negotiations, um, policy and communication. So, we just struck Wellness from a standing committee. The second was a more significant change of allowing remote, um, participation in a meeting. So, pre-COVID, this board did not allow telephoning into meetings or, in the modern age, more likely zooming into meetings. Um, other boards in town did. You could, um, call in for your board, but you couldn't vote. And this would be a change to allow that now, that somebody could call in and vote, which would be consistent with how other boards in town are currently operating. So, you can note those changes in the redline copies that Katie Wild sent you. Um, and then, then five other miscellaneous policies. Forty-two-ten, we talked about about a month ago, the minority teacher recruitment policy, a piece of legislation that required boards to update that policy under a new name of the Increasing Educator Diversity Plan. So, I brought you that plan a month ago, this is just the policy catching up with that. Uh, really, pretty much a title change. I'm no surprise if you've been following the news that we had to change our fifty-one-twelve-point-one, the Age of Entering Kindergarten policy, to reflect last year's legislative change about September first being a cutoff date, uh, the old cutoff date, and now going to, um, January first, but allowing a waiver. So, when you look at the edits that were sent to you, you will note those changes. Under, um, required attendance, there were a, a number of changes coming through as a result of a legislative change. Um, one of them is a minor change that we made locally to, um, give some flexibility to administrators and secretaries in how they accept absence notes, um, and allowing email communication to do that. The more significant changes in the policy are about, um, changes to both, uh, how schools will deal with truancy and chronic absenteeism. Specifically with, uh, truancy interventions that are, would be required, which, um, would be, the schools must conduct a mental health assessment of any student who is truant and must allow, uh, must provide parents with, uh, access to information about two-one-one services and other. So, all of the, um, and then some other language around, um, chronic absenteeism and what schools should be doing if their rates of chronic absenteeism hit certain rates. So, more of a, you'll see more redline text in that one, that we would ask you to review if you haven't already. Under Suicide Prevention and Intervention, Sue took the lead with this policy. There were some, um, required changes in this one, um, due to the legislature as well. Require, require you to have a policy.
Yep.
Many districts did not, we did have a policy, so it required us to update our policy. Um, and it also requires us to provide access to a.
Crisis line.
Crisis line.
Nine-eight-eight.
Nine, so thank you, nine-eight-eight, that one escaped me, so.
It's okay.
Um, so that was the Suicide Prevention Intervention. Then the, then the last miscellaneous policy, diplomas and certificates. Some changes that were required most significantly because of the requirement now that a financial literacy half-credit be part of the requirement. So, that sort of changed, um, the overall credit structure that is required for graduation, beginning with the class of.
Twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. And, um, a minor change to some test score cutoffs that, uh, happened for our basic skills graduation requirements that were a catch-up, um, of our practice. And then some required language around the completion of the FAFSA that, um, needed to get into our policy. So, that was all of the miscellaneous policies that we took care of in our first meeting. We convened again at the end of March to go through the two thousand series. Again, mostly about the roles and responsibilities of superintendent. What we did for that is compare our series to what CAE has for its model series. Our series compared very closely to CAE in, so the last time this got reviewed, however many years ago, we probably were working off the CAE series as a base. But we did add two new policies that CAE had that we didn't. One is about the board's responsibilities in recruiting and hiring a superintendent. And the second was about, um, anybody seeking to do educational research in the schools and what they need to do, which is basically work through Sue Lutke's office, if they wanna do that. So, I do that tonight, I'm not gonna repeat all of that two weeks from now. But that's kind of the nutshell of what these are all about. Your opportunity over the next two weeks, if you have not already had the chance to read them, is to get to me with any questions, so that I can raise them when second reading comes. Don't feel obligated to contact me. They can, um, but we, we do need to do a set, I mean, the four Policy Committee members have already seen these, so I'm really addressing the other four members, uh, who may not have, um, been involved in the intricacies.
So, you're there for us, Neil, is that what you're saying?
I'm there.
All right. That's good to know.
Well, thank you, Neil.
Thank you. That's a lot.
Somebody who just went through the FAFSA, that makes the hair on the back.
I'm sorry, you can't, don't even say it out loud, don't even.
Don't even say it.
Out loud.
Anyways, um, let's move on. Uh, the second public audience. Okay. Um, at this time, we need to move into executive session.
Can I make a motion, we move into executive section, session, to discuss a, um, matter that we're supposed to discuss?
Evaluation.
Evaluation matter.
Hold on, hold on, go on. Okay, so I guess I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we're now in.